It is November the 19th, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. We are here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I would like to first start out by introducing our honorary City Council member, Mason Ward of Bronner Intermediate School, Granbury ISD. Mason is a fifth grader at Bronner Intermediate School and serves as a Student Council Historian. He told me that this is the first time they've had a historian, so he is the first historian there at the school. His parents are Steve and Christie Ward. I think Steve and Christie are in the crowd there. Raise your hand there. Thank you for coming. And he's also, he's got his brother here. He has a sister named Aubrey and a brother named Cameron, and Cameron is in the crowd with us too, who are 12-year-old twins attending Granbury Middle School. Mason is a member of the First United Methodist Church, and his hobbies are sports, reading, history, and acting. His favorite class is social studies. So let's give Mason a big hand, folks. Mason, would you like to say anything about yourself?
Well, first of all, I would like to thank my family for doing this. They really put me in a happy mood always. And they always put a smile on my face. And so do my relatives and ancestors and people that are new to us. Thank you for those who live here. It's a great town, and I would thank everyone here for at this meeting.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Sounds like a council member in the making there. I'm telling that right now. I'd like to go ahead and we're going to have our invocation led by Mike Mahan with the Fellowship Church of Hood County, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Mason Ward. All rise, please.
Father, we want to thank you in the name of Jesus for Granbury, Texas, and its leadership. We hold up before you the women and men who are in positions of authority. We pray intercede for the mayor and the city council and all who are in authority in any way. We pray that the Spirit of the Lord rests on them. We believe that skillful and godly wisdom has entered into their hearts, that discretion watches over them and delivers them from the way of evil and evil influences. Lord, surround them with men and women who make their hearts and ears attended to godly counsel and do that which is right in your sight. We believe you cause them to be people of integrity, who are obedient concerning us so we can lead quiet and peaceful lives in all godliness and honesty. We pray that the upright shall dwell in our city government, that men and women blameless in your sight shall remain in these positions of authority, but the wicked shall be cut off from our leadership and the treacherous shall be rooted out of it. Your word declares that blessed is Granbury, whose God is the Lord, and we receive your blessing. Lord, you are our refuge and strength in time of trouble, so we declare with our mouths that we shall live safely in this land and we prosper abundantly because we are more than conquerors through Christ Jesus. It's written in your word that the heart of the king is in the hand of the Lord, and you turn it whichever way you desire. We believe the hearts of our leaders are in your hands and that their decisions are divinely directed by you. We give thanks to you that the word of the Lord prevails and grows mightily in the hearts and lives of the people, and we give thanks for our country and the leaders you have given to us. Jesus is Lord. Over. Granbury, Texas. Amen.
Follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge.
Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
I told Mason he gets a special treat tonight. We're going to go ahead and swear in the new council members. So at this time, we're going ahead and do the swearing in and also do the administration We could get Mr. Eddie Rodriguez to come forward.
Eddie, you want to do this again?
Oh, we're going to do it together. Eddie, you want to do this again?
I do.
Do this on this word.
Do this on this word.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office. Mayor, place two.
Of state Texas.
Of state Texas.
And will the best modulie.
And will the best modulie.
Protect.
Protect.
The earth.
The earth.
And defend the competition.
And defend the competition.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this.
And of this.
So I will be gone.
So I will be gone.
Eddie, you want to go ahead and stay up here? At this time, I'm going to present the certificate to Eddie Rodriguez, our new council member, for place two. In the name and by the authority of the city of Granbury, Texas, this is to certify that at the general election held on November the 5th, 2019, Eddie Rodriguez was duly elected councilperson, place two. And in testimony whereof, I have hereby signed my name and caused the seal of the city of Granbury, Texas, to be affixed this 19th day of November, 2019.
You're going to get used to this.
And now it's my privilege to present this certificate to our new mayor. It says, "In the name of and by the authority of the city of Granbury, Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on November 5th, 2019, Ninhuilat was duly elected mayor, place one. In testimony whereof, I have herein to sign my name and caused the seal of the city of Granbury, Texas, to be affixed the 19th day of November, 2019. Tony Mobley, Mayor Pro Tem."
Eddie, don't run off. At this time, we're going to go ahead and do the changing of the guards, you might say. But before that time, I'd like to call upon our city manager, Chris Kaufman, and our outgoing city council member, Tony Allen. Would you please come out?
No running. I told him we were going to flag him. We wanted to give him this, Mr. Allen, for your nine years of service as a city council member, and thank you for your dedication and hard work. And more than anything, thank you for hiring me. Well, I tell you what, it's not easy. Last week or last meeting, I thought it was the last meeting, and it was about a week and a year. So I didn't break down. I thought I did a good job. But it is something you love. You get used to it as part of you. Sometimes you can thank your mom. It's kind of still be love. I am going to announce, I am probably there as a leader for a conviction, and I probably signed up for it. But I love our city. I love what we do, what our goal is. And when we brought our city major, it was just death, life, and rap, and for our city. Not for today, but for next month, next year, years ago. We bought lands and stuff, or we bought lands that we've been using several years, but we got a family that goes out. Real quickly, when I was in the mayor, I said, "Now, here's the word for Granbury. I've been on the council about two years, but you said, 'Tell me what's your legacy.'" I didn't know what the word meant. So I wouldn't mind. She said, "What would you be, Mary?" She said, "When we get off the council, what is the beer later?" I don't know. Can't talk about it. If you change your thing about it, every council person would have hundreds of their minds. I feel it would be good for our city. Doesn't mean we always get it, but if you get it together, it'll get it. That's important as a team. We look back for the last seven years, we've had a great leader as the mayor. We've got roads, we've got water plants, we've got storage plants being built, we've got airports being built, we've got the sidewalks done, we've got one night, an opera house that is paid tax. All this was done by a team that believed in each other and worked together. The last two years, though, we ain't done nothing good yet. And that's where it's been, back there, because we need to spend our money on the right things the right way. I know the mayor is a good leader, he's a grip, so he's pulling out. I'm glad Eddie Moore, great guy, doing church with him, and he breaks the down, there was none of these talks, and he's breaking out once a month. God bless y'all. Thank you. I'm good. I'm good. I'm here, sir.
Thank you very much.
Skating bar.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Eddie, you didn't run off. Eddie, you're right here.
I'm right here. Thank you, brother.
It's on now. There you go. So Eddie, I want to congratulate you and welcome you to our city council. I'm going to give you the honorary pin, which you can wear on your lapel here. So, welcome to the city council. I know you do a good job for us. I've known Eddie too for a long time, and so, welcome aboard, Eddie.
Thank you, everybody that's in attendance here. Thank you, city council. Thank you, mayor. I'm just happy that I'm here to just serve, and that is my mission. I'm a servant, and I'm a servant by heart. And I just want to say thank you for everybody that believed in me, thank you that everybody that voted for me, and I just want to say that I just hope that you hold me accountable, just like anybody else that's on the city council, is that you hold them accountable? Because we are elected officials, and if we may not always get the right or make the right decision, but we're doing the best that we can. We're all human. And like, again, I appreciate everybody being here, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Eddie. We had to make that official before I could sit up here and take over. At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting for the citizens' comments regarding agenda items that are not public hearing items. The speakers have a time limit of three minutes allotted by this time for the public comment regarding agenda items that are not listed as a public hearing. Public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is open. Does anybody in the public wish to talk on any of the items or talk on any item? Hearing none, I'll close the citizens' comments regarding agenda items. Next, we're going to move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda, we have several items on there. The first one being to consider approving the city council meeting minutes of November 5th, 2019, regular meeting. Second one being consider approving the purchase of a residential electric strouse from 2S meter, CL 240 volt with remote disconnect from aquametric in the amount of $129,851. This is actually the round two. It is a budgeted item for the meters, the smart meters, I call them. Number three is to consider adopting ordinance number 1978, amending Article 13.02, 13.04, 13.05, 13.08 of the Code of Ordinance related to the General Utility Systems Rules, Water, Sewer, Electric System Rates and Rules. This is just some housekeeping council that we've reviewed with the utilities department, and we want to put these under the general code. Those are the items that we have for the consent agenda council. Do you have any questions or any of those items that you'd like to talk about or even to remove off of the consent agenda at this time? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by councilperson Tony Mobley and a second by councilperson Trish Reiner. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. You're on. Consent agenda is approved.
Consent agenda is approved.
Thank you very much, Mason. At this time, I would like to present our honorary council member with a certificate. The distinction of the honorary council member is presented to Mason Ward. He's a Bronner Intermediate School Student Council Historian. On this 19th day of November, 2019, in recognition of academic excellence and leadership and presenting the qualities of an excellent council member, signed by myself, Ninhuilat, the mayor of Granbury, and Dr. Jeremy Glenn, the Granbury ISD Superintendent.
Didn't y'all see him?
Oh, they can see him.
Sure. He's almost tall as the mayor.
And we'd also, yeah, we also want to present him with the honorary Granbury pin. He can wear on the lapel of this fancy jacket he has here. He's going to get a picture here of the whole council. Won't even move in here. See, I told you, Eddie, we take a lot of pictures on this council. There's also a special certificate on the back of this certificate that goes along with it, and I'm going to read a little bit about, I'm going to read the certificates on the back of the certificate here. It says, "Congratulations on being chosen to serve as an honorary council member with the Granbury City Council. Keep this certificate for your records, and as you apply to colleges and scholarships in the future, be sure to list this as one of your achievements. Your service to Granbury ISD and as a student leader for your campus is appreciated. We wish you the best of luck on a bright future. Dr. Jeremy Glenn, Granbury ISD Superintendent, Ninhuilat, the mayor of the city of Granbury." He also has that certificate on the back of this one here. So we, once again, we want to thank Mason Ward for doing this for us today, and we hope him the best in the future. We know he's probably got some homework to do and this and that, and go home, but we're going to allow him to step down from the dais now, and I want to thank his family for coming out also. Thank you very much. That's the first one of the year for that, and we're looking forward to more of them every month. Thank you, guys. We're now going to move into the deliberation agenda. The first item being a public hearing, consider approving a request of Ira Roach for the construction of a single-family water well located at 115 Reed Road. I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on that, if you would, please, Chris.
Thank you, mayor. I do just want to say that as part of our code requirements, we've got to go through this process. So Mr. Crown over at Public Works Director has the information report for us, and I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mayor, council members, this public hearing is a consider request for Mr. Ira Roach for the construction of a single-family water well located at 115 Reed Road. Location of this is approximately just north of the main entrance of Abe's Landing on Highway 51 North and approximately a half mile east on the other side of the highway there. City Code, Section 13, says, "A water service from a city or another utility is not available within 1,000 feet of the property line of subject property. A private water well may be drilled for irrigation or single-family use." The application is in your packet. It all seems to be in order. I may have given you too much information here, but the Upper Trinity Groundwater Conservation District has looked at this and has given me some feedback on it to the well driller with his correspondence located in this. Upper Trinity is asking that they not drill any lower than 235 feet in the below grade surface, and they should be able to find water approximately 100 feet in this formation. So their recommendation checks out. We approve, they approve it, and so there's also the survey plat in your packet as well. It's my understanding this is to be some type of animal kennel or grooming facility located for Mr. Roach. I'm not sure if he's here tonight. Yes, he is. There he is, right there, Mr. Roach. The applicant is present. There's also an exhibit showing the closest water line on Highway 51, just north of Abe's Landing. So be happy to entertain any questions, any comments that you may have.
Thank you, Rick. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open up to the public. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Like Rick said, the owner is in the audience, so if there's any questions to the owner, we're glad to have him step up there also. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions concerned to the staff or possibly the owner at this time in this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said request. I have a motion by Councilman Wadley and a second by Councilman Mobley. Was that Corrigan?
We're twins.
You're not twins. Okay. Okay, we had a motion by Councilman Corrigan and a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion on this item, council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Rick. Our next item is to consider adopting ordinance number 1959. Chris, I'm going to call upon you to give us a staff report on that, please.
So recently, I met with the hoteliers, and they expressed concern over this provision and this ordinance that pertains to limiting their ability to rent more than 25% of their hotel for a period over 30 days to any particular person. So we did some research. Both attorney and I both, you know, couldn't really comprehend how we could do that. We looked if there was any provision in the state law that allowed us to make that exclusion, and we did not find any. And then Jeremy might want to chime in on that, so make questions for you if you have any. But basically, we felt like it's unconstitutional to have that provision in there, and we haven't found anybody that, a TML, that says we should have that in there either. They concur that we probably overstepped our bounds when we adopted that. Originally, it was adopted at 5%, and then it went to 25% in a later date. So the hoteliers are interested in us removing that, and it's causing a burden for some of them. Like, one gentleman had an inspection, and he had one room, too many, rented for more than 30 days, and, you know, kind of got in trouble with our code enforcement team. So justified request, and staff recommends approval. Changing the ordinance as stated in the packet.
Thank you, Chris. Council, do you have any question for staff, Chris, on this item?
Mayor.
Councilman, hey, I didn't recognize that. I didn't recognize that boy's down there. Councilman Rodriguez, okay.
Do we know the history behind why the 25% was, why this provision was enacted, or what's the history behind it? Why did we put 25% in the first place?
He's asking you, Chris.
I do not know the answer to that.
I mean, city council, prior city council had approved this, so I'm just wondering if there's any history behind this and why they...
All I could tell you is it was probably during the oil boom, 2007, 2009 period, and they were concerned about hotel tax.
Could, I'm going to intervene here. Could it have been somewhat too with the, could have been related to some of the stays at the hotels from the outages, possibly? Is that, is that possible?
I have no idea. I bet J.C. Campbell was at the meeting. You remember?
But I mean, it went from 5% to 25%. We do know that, right?
Yes.
That was a, it was a kind of a money issue what they were talking about when they first talked about that thing. Oh, it was like the mayor said, 5% to 25%. That's a lot of funds. I wonder if you, if you bet you would understand. But it's been, it's been on the books for a long time.
But it went from 5% to 25. So it loosened up the regulations. Maybe when they built the hotel, they changed it from 5 to 25. I honestly don't know.
So let me ask you, I'm sorry, Chris.
Go ahead, Eddie. You got the floor.
Let me ask you, if we eliminate this and they extend past the 30 days, doesn't that eliminate them from paying the hotel, the hot tax? So we lose that income?
I'll let Jeremy address that. He's been working on the details of the legal issue.
I don't know who put it into place, but all of the research, all the case law, everything I can find tend to show that the enacting of this particular provision is kind of done in an arbitrary and capricious manner, almost an abuse of power, wanting to set forth a limitation.
uh, almost, uh, an abuse of power, wanting to set forth a limitation, probably for exactly what you're talking about, because we want to be able to collect that hotel occupancy tax under 351. However, what we have is an issue where the, 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 the tax code sets out exceptions, where you don't pay hotel occupancy tax. State dignitaries don't pay hotel occupancy. Um, uh, there's a governmental rate that don't pay, uh, hotel occupancy, and, and long-term residents, or what are termed permanent residents, anyone who makes a declaration when they check into a hotel that they will be staying more than 30 days, and there's a formal written declaration that they have to make, uh, are excluded from the tax. This provision was put in here that says, "Well, look, we're gonna limit you to, to 25% of your rooms." And the reason that that's arbitrary is because, for example, uh, and I'm not picking on anyone, I just happen to know some of these numbers, the Hilton Garden Inn has 106 rooms. What if we put the same type of provision in there that says, "You can only rent out 25% of your rooms at government rate." So 106 rooms, that's 26 and a half rooms, so 27. So if they have a conference here, which is, it's economic development, sales tax, we, we get other things off of this, but we say, "Well, you got 28 people, so sorry, can't rent any more rooms to these people." It's not, uh, equally applied, so the constitutional issue's become twofold. One, we interfere potentially with a constitutional right to contract. These hoteliers have the right to contract with people that come into their, their hotels in order to rent rooms. The, the second issue that we get into is an equal protection issue, because if we're limiting to, to just this one aspect of the exclusion, why are we not limiting to all of them? So I think if we were to end up in litigation, we would lose that litigation, and, and as we review through all of the, the ordinances, and, and when this was enacted, may have been a different standard, may have been different laws in place. But as the law reads now, uh, my advice as, as legal counsel is that it, it's, 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 it would be a constitutional issue that we would not want to have to deal with. So, the, the, the most just answer at this point is to just repeal that particular sentence and move forward. I hope I articulated that well enough for everyone to understand.
You did.
And I will share that I went to some hoteler meetings, and these are people that have, um, reached out to other communities, other folks, and, uh, and they don't have that. So that's why they were concerned that, why do we, why did we have any on there at all when there was other places that didn't have it at all, so, uh, I think the staff's doing the right, right thing.
Well, another thing, in the spirit of, of, um, trying to, to not be, uh, overbearing, the way the code, the state laws are written, uh, we, we really need to look at other issues, if we have other things that are coming up like that as well. I haven't seen any, but as, as the stakeholders make them aware, we may bring them back to you. But we don't want to, we don't want to be, uh, our thumb on everybody's, uh, right on top of them, smothering their opportunities to make a living, so. We do want to make sure that they follow the rules that are in place by the state, and if we do have some, some opportunity to expand those, then we would do that, but this one is, when I read it, I really was, uh, surprised that we had that ordinance in place, so.
No, I, I agree. I, I mean, I think there's pros and cons on this. I think the pros is that if somebody's in a transition period, and they can, they're looking for a, a place to stay, um, there's very limited places that you can stay past 30 days. That's the pro about it. Um, the, the negative side about this is, is, you know, we don't want every hotel to be an extended stay. I mean, the hotels are for, the purpose is for short stay, to get them in transition period to buy either a house, go into an apartment, or something like that.
Yeah, the, the terms of the agreement are that they have to service that room every day for it to be a hotel room, and so, or motel room. And so, that's a requirement. It's not a rental of an apartment, so to speak. It's, they don't have that kind of authority as a hotel. They don't have the zoning for it, and they don't have the ability to do that legally through the, being a hotel.
No, I understand that, Chris. Just like, uh, any hotel, you have that do not disturb, and they can put that do not disturb for 31, 35, 38 days if they want it to, uh, until they need towels, and they'll just throw them outside the door and, and ask for more towels. No, I, I think it, um, I think this is great.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel, any more question for the staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the said ordinance number 1979 as presented.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Wadley, we have one down there by Trish Reiner, Councilperson Reiner, I'm sorry. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to consider selecting a mayor pro tem from the, from, and among the five councilpersons. As you know, we do this on, uh, every, uh, day after the election, and the mayor pro tem is selected every year. And our present mayor pro tem is, uh, Mr. Mobley. Counsel, do you have any, uh, any, uh, suggestions, any nominations at this time? Councilperson Reiner?
Uh, I, I think I'm justified in saying that Mr. Mobley's done a great job as mayor pro tem, and I'd like to nominate him again.
So we have a nomination for Councilperson Mobley.
Second.
And we have a second. Counsel, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Councilman Pro Tem Mobley, you are still the council pro tem. Like I told him last year, I was gonna try to plan a whole lot of vacation. My wife would agree to that, so he could, he can get real polished, okay? Our next item is to determine and consider adopting the city council rules and procedures. Here again, this is an item that we do, that doesn't limit us from doing these throughout the year, but, uh, at this time, we, uh, would do the, uh, we, uh, adopt the rules and procedures. Better if there's any changes or any things you want to change on that, this is the time to do it, counsel.
I might just add some comment.
Go ahead, go ahead, Chris.
We did update this, uh, policy, uh, rules and procedure, to reflect the, the changes in the state law relating to the citizens' comment on agenda items, and, uh, and so we tweaked it a little bit there, but other than that, it remains the same.
And, and you're talking about some of the, uh, open, the, uh, public hearings and things like that, that's coming along, yes, right. We've added those, two of those, yes. So counsel, uh, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then to, uh, uh, adopt the city council rules and procedures as presented.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley, and second by Councilman Rodriguez. Counsel, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is, uh, I'm gonna read into this a little bit. On September 17th, 2019, council adopted resolution number 1925 nominating Steve Fortner, Ronnie Hurd, and incumbent Terry Johnson to the Hood County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. The official ballot for the city of Granbury was, was received by Greg Stewart, the chief appraiser, for the Hood County Appraisal District Board of Directors, as replied by section 6.031 of the Property Tax Code. Now, there are three places to be filled. Each voting district may cast one vote for each place. The term of office is for two years, beginning January 1, 2020. The count, the candidates in alphabetical order are Walter Baltrey, Steve Fortner, Ronnie Hurd, Mark Jackson, Terry Johnson, Bobby Mayberry, Donna Thompson, Van Vernon, and Margot Walsh. Counsel, once again, I, I know we have selected the, the three from the, uh, the council here, but if, uh, if there's some of these other ones that you would want to nominate or vote for, you are more than welcome to do that. Each council member will have three, three votes. What I like to do is just, uh, open this up for nominations. Do I have any nominations out of these nine folks to, uh, to serve on the, uh, uh, the appraisal district board of directors?
Mayor.
Councilperson Rodriguez.
I, I think Mark Jackson would be one of the, a good pick out of the three.
Okay, we got a nomination for Mark Jackson.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would like to include with Mr. Jackson, uh, Steve Fortner, and Ronnie Hurd.
Mayor, I agree.
Okay, we've got a nomination for Mark Jackson, Steve Fortner, and Ronnie Hurd. Counsel, any more nominations? Well, this makes it pretty easy, since we have three nominations and the three to vote on, so I'll just, uh, I'll entertain a motion to select Mark Jackson, Steve Fortner, and Ronnie Hurd to the, uh, uh, to the appraisal district board of directors.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Tr, uh, Councilperson Reiner and Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, any more discussion on these three? All in favor of Mark Jackson, Steve Fortner, and Ronnie Hurd, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We will present Mark Jackson, Steve Fortner, and Ronnie Hurd to the appraisal district for our candidates. I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened in an open session, that all our members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provision of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in this following section. Section 551071, consultation with the attorney pending or complications in litigations, and section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Before we break in executive session, I want to thank everyone for being out here tonight. Uh, I'm, I'm, uh, pleased that you're here, glad to see people coming and, and seeing the council meetings, and getting involved in the council meetings. So, once again, thanks for being here tonight. At this time, we'll close to executive session. We convened in an open session. There was no action taken in the executive session. Counsel, do you have any more discussion? Hearing none, the council meeting is now adjourned.